Okay, good evening. We're gonna start the planning board meeting for the town of Holliston for Thursday, January twenty first, two thousand and twenty one. I need to read a few quick paragraphs. And so I will go ahead with it. Pursuit to the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GLC thirty A, paragraph twenty, as well as the select board's emergency order dated three sixteen in two thousand and twenty. The planning board will be using remote participation for this meeting. The audio of this meeting is being recorded and will be posted to the town's website within twenty four hours in accordance with the governor's emergency actions requirements of keeping the public informed of actions during this meeting. I would ask that all participants remotely attending this meeting, please state your name for identification purposes each time you speak throughout the meeting and your address. In addition to accordance to the COVID nineteen order number fifty four, this meeting must conclude at nine thirty PM. In Holliston's form of government, the municipal legislation body is town meeting and the planning board does not constitute a municipal legislation body and therefore we must end at nine thirty PM as long as the executive order remains in force. At this time, I will do a roll call attendance vote for the members. David Thorne, Karen?
Present.
Jason?
Jason, present.
Scott?
Scott, present.
Okay, and Josh should be here shortly. And so our first item would be approval of minutes. Everybody had a chance to take a look at those? I guess I'll start with Scott.
Yeah, I took a look. Yeah, they seemed fine with me.
Okay. All right, Jason?
I have no issues.
All right, Karen?
Well, with the minutes anyway.
Okay.
The minutes are fine.
Okay. Would somebody like to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, Scott has made a motion. Do I have a second?
Jason, second.
Okay, Jason, second that. All right, how all in favor? Karen?
Aye.
All right, Jason?
Aye.
All right, Scott?
Aye.
All right, okay. Next would be approvals, not required subdivision.
There are none.
There are none, okay. Next would be twenty-two year budget request. I don't know if anybody, Jason, I don't know if you wanted to, if you had any questions or thoughts in regards to the budget request?
I'm just going through it, Dave.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Does Karen want to give us just a quick narrative?
Sure.
Sure, so you see the column that you're looking for is the request for FY twenty-two. Your guideline number is at the very bottom, one oh one, seven eighty-one. I think we're in at one oh one, eight thirty-one. That's level funding. We have a slight increase in longevity for Diane's time. Otherwise, we are level.
Looks good.
We've gone in at a zero percent salary increase and I think the FinCom and the select board have, you know, if they adjust this in the future, it would be across the board for cost of living. This salary rate for me is higher than the number of hours that I am currently working. I have not opted to up my hours to reach this year's budget, so you're gonna have a little bit of a surplus. And this has a cushion in it as well. I remain uncommitted. Professional services, this has shrunk over time and the select board has recently changed its terms with Mr. Tellerman's firm, so in all likelihood, this might be project money rather than legal money. Communications is everything from postage on down, so that's kind of an odd item. And professional development is both mine and yours. Mine are mostly memberships and yours are training sessions, availability. And I'm not sure whether any of you have taken advantage of those, but they are out there. The revenues? I'm not sure what's up with that. It seems like we're very busy, but the intake of dollars is not so great.
Well, Dave, to answer your question, Dave, I have no issue with the budget request.
Okay, thank you. Karen?
I have no issues either and I really like the summation of the risks and the opportunities.
Yeah, if you have any suggestions on how to fill those in, I never know.
Are we supposed to put something there?
I'm not sure. I generally do a narrative, like a memo narrative to them to meet their...I don't know that we're actually supposed to do this. I don't know.
I think it's fine.
All right, Scott?
So just quick question. So maybe you said it already and I missed it, but legal services, so that would roll up under the clerical part-time? Is that a true statement?
No, legal has traditionally been under professional services.
Okay.
But it seems like the way that the select board has sort of restructured their relationship with town council, the department will pay less and there'll be more of like a general pool for legal.
Okay. So we feel like we're covered with the two thousand there then?
Never, because if you look at like what was expended in twenty eighteen, there's just no, if you get a hot bite in item...
Yeah. But I guess that, what you're saying, that doesn't get charged back to the board? That's in like a general town fund?
It should not in going forward. You should not have public on the screen like this. So traditionally, you would have had to go to the finance committee to get a reserve fund transfer to deal with that.
Okay. All right, yeah, yeah, that's it. No questions.
Okay. All right. Well, I get this at this point. There's no further questions, I guess. Would somebody like to make a motion?
Jason, make a motion to approve the FY twenty-two budget request.
All right, and do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, Scott, a second that. All in favor, I guess, starting with Karen?
Aye.
Or Scott?
Aye.
And Jason?
Aye.
Okay, all right. And David, aye, all right. That's that. Next on the agenda, we have Liberty Estates, surety reduction.
This is a little three lot subdivision up across from the high school field. It is a private road and it is complete. However, we don't have the as-built plans. They are asking for surety because they, this is cash sitting in our coffers, so they are looking just to recoup some of their cash. So they are asking to reduce their surety down to the, essentially, the survey bounds and the as-built plans, which were their final two remaining items. They've left their contingency in there, so they're looking to release everything but the nine thousand three hundred and thirty fifty-five. This project was inspected by McClure and what else do I know about it? It's a cul-de-sac, it's about three hundred feet long. They did donate a bunch of land to the Concom that about the Daniel Conservation Area, and they fulfilled all those obligations. And they have occupancy permits on all three of their houses.
Okay. Karen, did you have any questions?
I don't. I actually would defer to Karen on this if she feels as though that dollar amount is sufficient for the two tasks that are left at hand. I see no reason why I would contradict that.
Okay, thank you. Scott?
Yeah, I agree with Karen on that.
Okay. And Jason?
No objections. So nine thousand is just for the as-bills?
And the survey bounds.
Okay, that, that sounds like there should be plenty, in my opinion, so, okay. No issue.
All right, with that, would somebody like to make a motion?
So, motion to accept the Liberty Estates surety reduction as proposed on the engineer certificate of completion form F.
All right. Karen has made a motion. Do I have a second?
Jason, second.
Jason has seconded, okay. Karen?
Aye.
Okay, Scott?
Aye.
All right, and then Jason?
Aye.
Okay, and then David, aye, okay. Okay, there's that. And I just want to check something here quickly. Well, really quickly, I know that we had one public hearing that was gonna open up at seven oh five for fifteen sixty-nine Washington Street. And what I would ask is, I have a letter here from them requesting, well, I need somebody to make a motion to withdraw without prejudice. They have asked to withdraw this application. So we just need somebody to make a motion to that effect.
Okay. Motion to accept the withdrawing of the special permit and site plan review for fifteen sixty-nine Washington Street without prejudice.
Okay, Karen has made a motion. Do I have a second?
Jason Santos is second.
Okay, Jason is seconded. I guess Scott?
Aye.
All right, Karen?
Aye.
All right, Jason?
Aye.
All right, and David, aye, okay. So that's that. Okay, and I just, before we, let's see, I want to get my paperwork here, the next item here, okay. Next item is the continued land disturbance and storm water permit discussion, CRG Integrated Real Estate Solutions. And if I may, we have the town, our town council attorney, Jay Tellerman on the, and if I could have, I think he's here, I saw him a second ago. I think he's still here.
Yep, he's here.
Okay, oh, great. Hi, good evening. I don't know if you, I know you've had some discussions with them in regards to this. I was wondering if you could give us an update in regards to this.
Me? You'd like me to touch on?
Well, I just, I know you're on the call. We didn't know if there, I know I got some paperwork, I know there was a discussion.
Right.
But...
So with, yeah, with...
If there was any update from your end?
Well, I mean, there's a lot to update on the project in general, but we'll save that for February. With respect to this one, the way we left it was that Dave would work with Peter on that kind of slate of conditions and a plan to essentially manage the tree removal and distill that down to a decision. Dave and Peter did work on that. Dave provided Karen with a list of items and then Karen wrote it up into a decision. I added a little bit of language in it, not too much. It was pretty straightforward. And I believe Karen has circulated that to the members. So that would be kind of the protocol, the safeguards of the management of the tree removal and also putting a marker in place to say that this has nothing to do with the other components of the land disturbance permit, the removal of more trees and then the stumping of the entire area and any regrading.
Okay. And I just want to remind everybody that's on the call, and again, thank you everybody that's on the call, the only discussion tonight that we're discussing is the tree removal and the storm permit discussion. There's no discussion of anything else that we're, so this is the only topic tonight in regards to this particular site. So we're not talking about any other things that we've talked about. So this is just focused on this one item here. So I just thought I'd let, so I guess, I guess at this point, Peter, I see Peter's on the call and I didn't know if you...
Dave Feist is on the line.
Oh, and Dave Feist is on the call, okay. I didn't know if Peter wanted to give us an update, just in regards to this, or go through what your thoughts were on this.
No, no, thank you very much for the opportunity. So yes, David had put together a few additional items, which we've incorporated into the plan itself. So there's actually a standalone plan to describe all of this, the sheet one of one, and on it identifies it as phase one, remove zone A and perimeter cut timber only through processing area A. And we also identified the pieces of equipment that would be used to do this task. Sony Corp. is the company. We gave you a letter from Sony Corp. identifying their piece, all their pieces of equipment to do the entire process. But in this case, we identified the pieces particularly that'd be used for the clearing component only. And there was the skitter, and it's actually shown the scale going up and down the embankment. And then there's a hobbister or a grapple to load the trucks. And there's an entrance apron that's included down to the right that's shown in the hatch. And there's a erosion control barrier that would be installed on the downhill side of that component. And then on the left, there's a number of notes that are to be followed. So we tried to take all of the things that were very specific to the project and memorialize them on the plan itself. So this would just be a standalone document. That's pretty much it, Mr. Chairman. I'd be happy to interview you for the questions. And I believe the way the draft disturbance addenda was put together is just fine with us. So I thank you for the opportunity to get to this point with this aspect of the project.
Okay. I think Jason, I don't know if you had some questions or...
I did, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just reading through the conditions of approval. I'm curious, Attorney Tellerman, if you have, I had a few thoughts with regards to, you know, always looking, trying to cover ourselves as a town, right? So if, if by chance there was a misunderstanding or a miscommunication from one day or one week to the next, and some trees, some further trees were to be cut, I had envisioned some sort of recourse where maybe the applicant could provide the equivalent number of trees with regards to the size and diameter and plant them in a mutually agreed upon location between the town and the applicant at a mutually agreed upon time. And I started to think about this because, you know, I wondered, well, there's got to be something that we've got in writing that would prevent, you know, it's, we've gotten here, we've, all the trees are down, twenty acres or so. What stops, you know, what do we have, I guess, as a recourse for, you know, to prevent the applicant from cutting more trees? Is there, is there such a thing, as I just mentioned, that we could include in, as conditions as part of this, in this permit?
Well, you could certainly include some conditions. I think that perhaps requiring replacement of like-sized trees is, it can be, can get fairly expensive. But what we do have in place already, and I think Chip Nylan, who's on the call, could confirm this, is we've got a court order that says they, they can't do anything unless they get the approvals. And they cease and desisted and are coming to us within the three phases. That, which is why I added the language, saying that this was only as to this first of the three phases that Peter described last time. So contempt accord is a pretty big club. They'd be in violation of that as well as in violation of the bylaw and risking further court injunctions and other penalties that the court may fashion in terms of replacing of trees and other things. So, and it would also be a significant risk to them and in other related permitting activities on the site in terms of loss of goodwill and this and that. I certainly don't mind some additional conditions that buttresses the fact that no further cutting is required. But I think it, that's inherent in what we've already done. And again, we've got a court order in our back pocket. And I don't think, I don't think Chip Nylan would disagree with that.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, Chip Nylan here?
Yes, sir.
So I think it should be said that when the initial cutting was done, was based upon an interpretation in terms of what land disturbance was. Once we had discussions with the town and when the lawsuit was filed, we agreed with the interpretation. So it was never an intent to, to do that, to do that work and to flaunt the planning board. And once we entered into that agreement, Attorney Tellerman is absolutely correct, there will be no more cutting out there without the approval of the, of the planning board with the land disturb, under the land disturbance permit. I think that we have acted that way since the order was issued. And we also recognize that when he talks about the club of a contempt or fines, sanctions and things that are a lot more costly than, you know, planting trees. But it's, it's not our intention to violate that order or to cut down any further trees without the approval of the planning board.
I guess one question is, why take all this out now? Why not wait until we've had a further discussion? You know, what is the, what's the rush now to get all this lumber out of here, rather than waiting until we've had a chance to discuss this whole project and further? I just, I don't know who can answer that, but it's just a, a quick question on why we're, you know, why not wait to get this lumber out of here until we've had further discussions in regards to this whole project?
I'm gonna defer to Peter to answer that first.
Okay.
Yeah, so, Mr. Chairman, you know, as part of our arrangements with the tree clearing company, the trees are basically his, his product, if you will. That, that's something that by cutting down the tree is part of his contract. It's, it's his wood to process. These are trees that will go to a mill to create lumber for housing and whatever, whatever else. And then other parts of it will go to a power plant. And some of it, well, the other parts would go to landscaping components, but that component's not being touched now. So in answer to where it goes, the product is the, at this point, is kind of the ownership of the tree clearing company. So we'd like to continue to fill our obligations under our contract with them. But also understand that this is just for the felled trees that are on the ground now. We're not cutting any new trees. We'll be coming back to you for that. This is strictly to take care of the ones that are down. By leaving them there a long period of time, they end up going to rot and they're no good any longer. So I'm of the opinion that I would not want to waste these trees. And also, I don't believe the activity that we're going to do in any way is gonna disturb or create a burden on anyone. We certainly are gonna go through the review process with you for the remainder of this project, and I certainly hope I can get the board's support for that project. And there'll be other clearing that's needed for that. But again, tonight's approval that you're gonna be considering is strictly to remove the trees that are already cut and down on the ground.
And there are no, no stumps are being removed?
No, 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 strictly, just the butts of trees and the crown. That's it.
Okay. I was wondering if we could hear from David Feist?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name's David Feist with CMG Engineering. And I have basically what, I agree with what Peter's, you know, mentioned tonight. They're just proposing to remove the trees from the property. The erosion controls they're proposing, you know, should be adequate. Only comment would be, I know in the conditions of approval, we note just the erosion control barriers should be per their, you know, some of the plans they prepared. They just additionally, there's, just need to keep some additional on-site, just in case there's some issues during the, if there are any. And then also to place erosion control along, I guess it'd be the eastern barrier of the cleared area, which is along basically the Medway-Holliston Town Line, which again, that's in the writing, but that's the only additional thing they should probably note. But other than that, I know this is a good time of year, if the ground's frozen, to get those trees out of there, because it'd be very minimal erosion possibility if the weather can continue as it is. I'd be happy to answer any questions you or the board might have.
Yeah, Scott, I didn't know if you had any questions or...
Yeah, I mean, I guess it's, it's not a good situation that we're in. I mean, the trees are down. That's a fact. I guess, as long as we're crystal clear that there's no additional tree cutting without the approval of the board, I mean, the trees are down, the manner in which they became down isn't great, but I guess kind of is what it is at this point. So yeah, no, no further questions.
Thank you, Scott. Karen?
Yeah, I mean, I agree with Scott. It is such a shame that we are here in this order in regard to this topic. I, I guess when I hear the reason why they have to move out now, that rationale has nothing to do really with the project, but has to do with a third party that was brought in based on the way we got here. So that doesn't have a lot of weight with me. I want to hear more about specifically what is this erosion control that they're using? I want to hear more about if we do wait, what would we have to do to the site to minimize the erosion problem? And yeah, that's, those are the things that I want to know right now. So I think maybe I'm asking David that. What specifically are we advising for erosion control barriers? Sometimes we see things put up like little black fences that get knocked over really quickly and then they never get replaced. Sometimes we see like those hay things that are rolled. However, once the project starts, they seem to get destroyed and no one ever seems to replace them. So I'd want to know like what we're doing about that. And, and then to speak further to, if the trees were done later, what would have to be done to the property in order to mitigate as much damage as possible?
Basically, there's sort of, I hope I'll try to cover all the answers. You had a few questions there. To start with, erosion control, the basic, the two main things they're doing is one, installing a gravel construction entrance down in the area at the end of where the, I guess that you can see the cul-de-sac on the plan. Currently, that's the area they were working in. Right now, it's just dirt. So that will help, you know, mitigate some of the tracking, because that's probably the more heavily traveled area where the trucks will be loaded onto, the trucks will be leaving the property. In addition, they're proposing, I believe, you know... In addition, they're proposing, I believe, you know, Peter can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think he had a a double roll of the, I think, the the waddles, erosion control walls will be staked in along the edge of that as well. Currently, there's not an erosion problem out there now. What we're protecting against is a potential erosion that could come just from running of the equipment running, you know, through the property. They're not removing any of the stumps of the forest mat, which is a good thing as part of this, so that also will help minimize the erosion. The other safeguards in place in the conditions of approval, they're being required basically to, on a weekly basis, do stormwater inspections using the form that's provided in their stormwater plan and after any significant rain event. Part of that process of if they find a problem, they'll be able to correct it, you know, immediately. In addition, I believe there's another condition in there that the site operator will just provide the planning board with a daily log of activities, which provides another opportunity, if there's any sort of issue out there, to notify the board of what's going on. The third sort of tier safeguard in this condition of approval that's on there is the ability of the board or the town planner to engage us if needed to go out and do an on-call inspection to double check as a third party to make sure everything's in place. So just as with the overall site stormwater pollution prevention plan, this is sort of a mini mini one to help provide in addition to the physical controls, there'll also be some inspection related controls and they're required to have extra erosion control materials on site just in case, let's say, we have a warm up and you got a heavy rain, you know, they have, you know, they can mitigate that and have have some safeguards. If they wait till later in the year, again, it's same process would apply to removal of the trees. It's really just a matter of making sure that, you know, the inspections are the way to sort of make sure day to day things are not causing a problem. And then the physical controls, make sure they're maintained and then have documentation provided to the board saying that that's that everything has been done in compliance with your conditions. And I hope that covered most of your questions.
You did, thank you.
David, Jason, can I just ask, how how often, and maybe this is a Karen, Chairman question, how often would David be going out there to do site inspections? Do we did we do we know that? Did we talk about it already? I don't recall.
I think Dave just offered that he would be on call. I'm assuming that's based on what he receives in terms of their monitoring and what I receive in in the log to the board. Certainly, it would be my intent to, you know, get follow-up after a significant storm event. And I'm assuming Peter is going to do the same on the other side of the fence.
Okay.
I I could add that that we do have performance standards outlined in our SWAP. So we do respond on a quarter inch rainfall event and then we respond on a weekly basis. We did give you a timeline for Mr. Sony's activities here. We had estimated, you know, a certain number of days. So should there be a rain event during that time period, a quarter inch or more, we would respond. Again, on a weekly basis, we would respond. Again, the activity that we're talking about, asking you for permission for tonight, is to remove those felled trees and to process those out the out the front end of the site. There is erosion control associated with that. I believe it more than meets the requirements. You have six interests in your stormwater management and land disturbance bylaw. And again, all of those are satisfied, particularly where the town of Hollison has the legal authority. That's the mechanism that's here. And it's twofold. It's not just the permit, it's your court order as well. So I think you're very well protected and and we know how we're going to go forward with this project. I'm sorry for the way it was interpreted in the past, but we do know the way forward. So that much I can tell you. Thank you.
One more question. After the erosion control has been installed, David, is it is it are you are you going to go out and inspect it?
Yes, I believe we, as part of the conditions of approval, once that's installed, we'll actually have a pre-construction meeting with the applicant, Peter, and their tree cutting company, just to make sure everything's been installed correctly before they proceed with the removal.
Okay. Thank you.
Attorney Tillerman, I just had a quick question. I just want to clarify, I'm a little bit confused. The this work was done by, I believe, the owner of the property and we are making having discussions with CRG. I was wondering the distinction to between the two of them. I don't know if I know they have the permit. The permit is with CRG, but I believe the work was conducted by the owner. How does that how do those how does that work in regards to?
Well, I think that whatever you issue should should issue to CRG. I think that the the Hoppingbrook folks, the owner, are essentially acting as the agent for CRG, but I think CRG has consistently been the applicant. We had asked CRG to clean up some of their status. They weren't formerly licensed to do business in Massachusetts and we had a big problem with that because of recourse. Since then, they have registered in Massachusetts and Chip kind of cleaned that stuff up. And I've actually had, along with Karen, have had a meeting with some CRG folks virtually to talk about the project in general. So we know they exist now and they are the responsible permit holder, but it's my understanding that the site work is being overseen by their agent essentially, who is the owner. But you should be consistent in the issue and whatever you issue here as an interim order, it should be issued to CRG. It can reference certainly that the Hoppingbrook folks are doing the work, but it's CRG's responsibility ultimately.
And from a I I know we've had several discussions, meetings about this tree work, our tree getting the rest of the trees out, just the trees that are on the ground. From a legal aspect, your advice, they've already got the permit, but the work was done without our knowledge. So in regards to this, whether we say yes or no, I guess my question for you would be some of the consequences in regards to no.
If we if you said no to this work?
Yes, yes.
Well, I mean, at a certain point, we do have to move along the land disturbance issues. They have certain rights to pursue certain work under land disturbance. They've asked for a little bit of an interim order and and I think that they they, you know, no one's happy with the way they conducted themselves originally, but we do have the court order saying they can't do any work without approval of the board. There's still work to be done on what Peter has termed phase two and phase three of the land disturbance work, and they've agreed not to do any of that work until they've satisfied all the concerns and some project elements may be in flux too. So it's possible we may see a little bit by way of changes there. I'm comfortable, you know, that this is not the kind of a permit that ultimately we have a tremendous amount of authority to say no to. We did grant the underlying original approval subject to receipt of a more final plan. So to the extent that there are concerns overall about the illegal work that they did, I think we cover that through the conditions, including the addition of, I I believe it's number 10 that I made that says that this has nothing to do with any further work. This is just an interim order. But we should separate this work from other concerns that we may have on the ultimate use of the property, which is an ongoing issue that's part of the February hearing.
Okay. Well, thank you. I just wanted to get your get your part of it. And then I'll talk to some of the board members again. I just, you know, I understand that this is something that we have to move along. I guess I'm still just a little frustrated because this happened without and we had to stop it. And in that process, I I understand this gentleman is looking to make some money off of the logs. I get that. I just know that the town has now heard charges because of this. So it it just it it's I just want to make sure, you know, one way or another, that we're all on the same page and that this is just for the things that are on the ground, meaning all the logs that are on the ground and that the proper procedures are taken to go in and put the, you know, not take the stumps out and not cut any more trees. So that that's my concern, but I I thought I would let the other board members talk again too. I I don't know if Scott had anything else?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I I have no reason to disagree with David that all the erosion control and everything is is in order. Again, it's 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 just it's just a bad situation all around, but based on what Attorney Tillerman just said, we have to move this along. So I mean, my my personal opinion, I don't speak for the rest of the board, but I would be okay with them removing the felled trees only with the understanding that nothing else is cut and no stumps are removed without the approval of the board. That's just my opinion.
Karen?
Dave, I think you said that beautifully. You know, it's it's just a really rotten position that we've been put into and obviously it's generated enough concern that we have all these people on listening as well. And I think it's important that they understand that we're in this situation not by our choice. I'm going to go back to these 10 conditions and one of the ones that always seems to cause a little bit of issues is the time in which people start working. So the the way I read this is that nothing starts before 7:00 a.m. Not an engine, nothing starts. Would that be appropriate to be reading that way, Mr. Tillerman?
I'm I'm trying to get the actual language up on my other device here.
Yeah, daily staging, comma, equipment startup, comma, collection and timber processing activities shall be limited to five days per week, Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., with the exception of any national holidays. So my experience is that we typically have very conscientious workers. They may be coming from far areas and they arrive to the site sometimes a half hour before, excited to start their day. I think that's lovely. However, starting before 7:00 o'clock, anything to me is a non-negotiable. And I want to be clear that that's what we're talking about. I I'm also very concerned about this, just the way we list any national holidays. I think that we should be clear and list them out because for some reason, there just seems to be confusion around that with some people looking to do business in the town. So I just want to be really clear in number seven and I'm asking how to write that so that it is absolutely clear.
Well, I certainly think the the front part of it is incredibly clear. With the exception of any national holidays, I I think we all know the the few major ones we're talking about and those could easily be listed out. But it says what it says on seven. I think it's quite clear that really they're not supposed to be doing anything, equipment startup or otherwise. The the one thing you you may also, I mean, you could always state idling of trucks, whatever you want to do in terms of adding to that, then the rest of it is up is up to enforcement. It's all these conditions or any condition of any permit is only so good as the enforcement that you put into it. So if they violate, they violate and we've done cease and desist orders before and we could do them again. But it is pretty stringent there. It doesn't say no activity. It describes exactly what activities you cannot do. So I I think it's quite clear, number seven. I think we could spell out the national holidays, certainly. I think the only interpretation of national holidays here that I would be that I think would be unclear is whether it includes something additional beyond the big ones that we get days off work for. I think we all know what the the big ones are and it's a question of whether it's going to capture the little ones. So it probably the broadness probably serves us better than being more specific, but I certainly don't mind spelling those out.
I think that for clarity, within their time period that they're proposing, there is one holiday and that would be President's Day.
And then, Mr. Chairman, if you added engine, this is Chip Nyland, if you added engine idling to that, that might address one of the board members' questions. And and when I look at my calendar, February 15th is President's Day. That's a Monday.
Okay.
And this is proposed to go three to four weeks? Is that right?
I think, Peter, you can answer. That's what Peter's answer was last time that we spoke in terms of the the timing, yes.
It just because again, that the we're probably not going to go during, you know, when it gets dark, so it's it's going to get dark probably around 4:15, you know, maybe 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 it gets a little bit lighter later, but we're not going to make 5:00 o'clock, I can assure you. So, yeah, we're going to lose a little bit every day. So I would say that it could take up to three weeks to do this, yes.
And the truck trips are happening during the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m.
That's understood. That's what the decision says.
I'm all set, Dave. I don't have any more questions.
Thank you. Jason?
I I am all set, David. Everybody covered just about everything. Thank you.
Okay. All right. We've got a list of things here. I don't know if the Attorney Tillerman had anything else he would like to add to this in regards to for this particular item.
No, I'm I'm comfortable with the language. Again, adding engine idling to number seven might be a good add. Other than that, I think it's quite protective. I I think Dave did a really good job jumping on this quick, working with Peter to provide some assurances and Karen and I didn't even have to add a tremendous amount after Dave kind of did his job looking out for us on this.
Okay. Okay. All right. I don't know if you had anything that?
I think you're good for the audience. I would just say that there is a condition that requires residential abutters within 300 feet of the property to be given written notice of the commencement of work and it's a little different than the permit. It's three days in advance and the notice is going to contain the permit. So if you have any questions about the conditions, you will have a copy of it. It will be sent to you as in a butter and you'll also have a contact information as well.
Okay. 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 Um, well, I guess at this point, um, since we've discussed that, I don't know if there's anybody in regards to board members that wanted, would like to make a motion to this effect.
David, I guess I'll make a motion to approve removal of the felled trees only, um, pursuant to everything that we just talked about.
Okay. Scott's made a motion. Do I have a second?
Uh, Jason's second.
Okay. All right. Jason's second, and I guess we'll go through, I guess first Karen.
This is one of those areas where I just find it to be incredibly difficult. Our attorney has laid out that at some point the applicant has rights to be able to develop their land. I so wish the conversation had come in a different direction. In the situation we're in, it, it does appear that these are some of the best condition, conditions that we can come up with. And I just want to be absolutely clear that I am with great reservation approving it only because of the guidance of our attorney. I am not happy with the situation, but I don't want the situation to not have our controls on it. And that is the reason why I would approve this plan.
Okay. Thank you, Karen. Uh, Scott?
Um, I echo what Karen said. Um, yes, aye.
Okay. And, uh, Jason?
As usual, Karen, very well said, and I concur completely. Aye.
Okay. That's three ayes. And then I, I think again, what Karen, what you said, I, I couldn't say better. Uh, just completely, uh, frustrated and, uh, but I understand at this point, um, uh, I am an aye also. So that's four. I don't know how, if that's three, okay. Okay. So that's, uh, you have, I think at this point, uh, that's, um, that's been voted on. So, uh, thank you for that. Uh, thank you, everybody that's on the call. We understand and we appreciate everybody that's on the call for that. We do have one more public hearing for something else, another, um, something else in town. But in regards to this, that's the only thing we've worked discussing tonight for this particular property of 555 Hoppin Brook. Um, we will be meeting again to discuss this, uh, the, the February 4th. So that's when we will have another discussion in regards to this. So, um, I appreciate everybody that's on the call and, uh, uh, we understand everybody's concern and, uh, we, we thank you for sitting and listening to the call. So, um, uh, you're welcome to stay, but, uh, at this point, we voted on that. We're moving on to the next topic, which is another public hearing for something else in town. So thank you, everyone. Uh, next is, Gill Realty Trust, and that is at 45 Washington Street. This is a continued public hearing. Assuming there's... Uh, I see, uh, I think C is on the call. How are you, Dale? Do you, uh, wanna, are you presenting tonight? Are you, uh, we? It's, uh... Good evening. How are you?
Good. Mr. Chairman, is this 45 Washington Street?
Yes. Yes, sir. We've just opened the, uh, continued public hearing.
Great. Thank you. Dan Marican with Legacy Engineering, here with Richard Gill, who is the applicant. If I could have permission to share my screen, please?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Um, we met with the board about a month ago. This is for the redevelopment of Countryside Auto at 45 Washington Street. That's an existing used car, uh, sales facility. And, uh, we presented the project to you back at the end of December, and at that time, we were still working through, uh, peer review comments from Mr. Feist. And since then, we have submitted a revision, and it has been reviewed. And you have a letter, I believe, from your consultant indicating that everything is acceptable. He did note one typo, which we have corrected and submitted a new plan to you correcting that one typo. Just to give you a, an overview, again, uh, to refresh your memory about the project. This is the existing facility here. You have the existing building here in the front. This is all paved. This is all gravel. The applicant's proposing to demolish the existing building, construct a new one and a half story building that would be used as a sales and service facility, uh, for the cars that are sold from this property. Uh, the big, I think the big, the big improvement here is stormwater management. There is no stormwater management of any significance on the property presently. So as we redevelop the site, what we're doing is we're, uh, installing some proprietary treatment units. We're installing two stormwater infiltration basins that will treat the runoff from the site, uh, which results in a, a very significant improvement. Uh, so the, the, the big change from the last set of plans was stormwater basin one here. Based on comments from the Conservation Commission and DEP, we shifted it further away from the wetlands. So there's been a, a minor reconfiguration of this area. But overall, the site plan as originally proposed is essentially the same. Uh, some of the comments that we got from the board at the last meeting was asking us to specify what kind of trees were going to be installed, which we did. We stipulated all native varieties of deciduous and evergreen trees for the landscape plan. Um, we also, we added one more light pole here because we had a little dark area in here. And that's really about it. There haven't been a lot of other substantive changes. The zoning board has closed their hearing and is, uh, getting ready to vote. The Conservation Commission also on Tuesday closed their hearing and will be voting on the, uh, application at their next meeting. So I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have about this project, but at this point, I think we have a final site plan, um, ready for the board to consider.
Okay. All right. Uh, I guess, uh, Scott, did you have anything that you, any questions?
I mean, from the site plan, it looks like a, it looks like a site improvement to me. I mean, they're clearly building a better building than what exists now. I guess my question is, how do the cars typically arrive onsite? Are they car carriers? Are they driven in? Are they small car trailers? How does it work?
Uh, this is Richard Gill from Gill Realty Trust and the operating store itself, Countryside. It's a combination. Some cars are driven there and some cars do arrive by carrier.
Okay. Yeah, David, I think I'm good.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Karen?
Yeah, I guess I would go off of Scott's question and just take it one step further as I look at the site plan. Where is the car carrier coming in? How's it getting unloaded? And then how is it exiting? Because you're going to have less space now, right? Your building's going to be so much bigger. And, and I agree with Scott. It is an improvement. I just want to understand the flow.
Sure. The, I'm not, um, obviously one of the truck drivers, but I'm going to assume that they're going to pull in, um, I depend on which side they're coming from, either the westerly, um, curb cut or the easterly, um, unload onsite and then drive. Most of the cars that are delivered today come on the smaller kind of carriage. You might see them on the road, um, usually a, a three or four car carrier as opposed to the really big ones. So they're, um, it's, they're a, a lot more maneuverable.
So they would come in either one of these entrance points? And these are two existing driveways presently. We're modifying them slightly, but not significantly. So if they could either pull in here, load up, you know, temporarily sit here and offload and then pull right out, or do the reverse?
I guess worst case would, uh, like, let's say you had a big nine car carrier. Would that be able to make the turn there without, because it, like, the, the turns look like pretty much 90-degree angles to the road. Would they be able to make the turn without pulling into a, like, the other lane of traffic?
I believe so. I, I've seen these guys drive these trucks for many, many years, and it's, it's kind of, and, and not just car carriers, just, um, you know, tractor trailer drivers in general. They amaze me what they can do.
Do you have any other questions? Scott? No. Oh, Karen?
Yeah, no, sorry. Sorry to jump in.
Perfectly fine. Um, I'm just curious, um, roughly, how many cars do you sell a week?
Uh, we sell about, um, we look at it more on a monthly basis, but
Sure.
You can divide it by four. Um, about 25 a month, so maybe, you know, uh, six a week.
So it's safe to say there would be at least one, three or four car carrier a week coming to replenish whatever's there?
That's safe to say.
Right? Okay. All right. Um, how about, um, dumpsters and removal of whatever has to be, uh, taken out of the property? Your dumpsters are going to be where?
The dumpsters will be across the, uh, rear of the property.
Okay.
And, um, uh, obviously very, um, regulated in terms of, uh, cardboard dumpster, um, general refuse dumpster. Any, any, um, uh, waste that we create gets taken away properly.
Yeah, I wasn't suggesting that. I was just wondering, as far as trips go?
Um, I, I'm going to say that's less than once a week. Because we have, um, a pretty, I, I don't know what the, the yardage is on the dumpster, um, but, um, kind of not one of those big long container dumpsters, but it's kind of a full-size dumpster. And we don't, we don't really create a lot of waste in terms of the big stuff.
And, and I think I recall last time, but please correct me if, if I'm not remembering this the right way, that the work done on the vehicles will be the, the vehicles that you are preparing to sell and the ones that you do sell. But you wouldn't be servicing vehicles that don't come from your facility. Is that correct? Did I remember that right or wrong?
That's correct. We do not, um, we're not open to the public as we, we were in the past when I had, um, a tenant in there, Countryside Service, who's moved to, uh, Washington Street, the other end of town. So we're not, um, open to the public. We just service our own cars.
And you won't be called Countryside anymore?
Oh, we will. We will.
Oh, okay.
He was Countryside Service.
Oh, okay. All right.
Where is the, uh, I, I don't see the dumpster on this map here on the, on the, uh, I don't see it. You said in the back here. I'm looking here. I don't see it.
We don't have that, we don't have that on there presently. We can add that. It's easy enough.
So is that in these 11 parking spaces somewhere, either to the right or the left?
I'll discuss it with Richard, but we'll probably put it in one of these areas. We have, we have several areas that are basically set aside and dedicated for display vehicles, vehicles for sale. Um, so I think we'll, we'll take one of these areas up here for that. But I can, I'll review that with the applicant and we can tack that on the plan.
So it would be out in the back there somewhere behind the building in one of those 11 spaces?
We could do that. We could put it, tuck it into this corner here. Yeah. We can add that.
Okay. I guess it's just a question whether they can get that big truck back there to empty it. What, what, um, I, I, I know, I don't know if these, uh, vehicles are coming from Natick. I know you, you're, you possibly, they're coming from somewhere down along your, over Natick there, I guess? Or are they coming from Adessa? Or where are they coming from? What are these items? I guess we're just concerned about the truck, the trucks, you know, larger trucks hauling these things around.
Sure. Um, s, um, a lot of the cars come from our main facility in Natick. And some of the cars will come from, um, auctions, which could be Adessa in Framingham. But it could also be, a- as the, as the world has evolved, technology has evolved, it has, it's, it's, it's touched our business as well. We buy a lot of cars online, um, from, you know, banks, leasing companies, et cetera, and they come from other auctions. And so we, they, we don't necessarily know where the car is physically located. It might be a bank. It has, it has, the car could be, you know, it could be in Rhode Island. It could be in New Hampshire. But, you know, we, you know, we buy the car from them online to an auction and it gets transported to us.
Okay. I guess we just have had some concerns in the past with our permitting in regards to, um, uh, stuff coming through, uh, other towns like Sherwin and, uh, other towns and coming down different ways, uh, with the multiple vehicles on a car carrier. So I know there's been concern, concern, and coming through different parts of Holliston. Yeah, certainly it's a, something that's a concern now, uh, truck traffic and things like that. So I guess that's why I was bringing it up. So it could be coming from anywhere, not just...
I'm pretty sure that, uh, Western Avenue, Framingham, um, the, the trucks are, uh, I don't know, is, is it still Western Avenue when it, when it turns into Sherwin there? I think it is. But I'm, I'm pretty sure that, um, car carriers are, um, prohibited from that road. So, and I think that the, the big transportation companies know, you know, where they can and can't drive, because if they drive in the wrong place, I think they get fined, um, pretty significantly. Take it.
Will there be enough space on your property for that? Like, if somebody arrived earlier after hours, what, what is going to be your plan?
Well, that, that whole center, um, I'll call it a center kind of driveway that runs parallel to Washington Street.
Yep. Behind the, just where the cars would be displayed?
Correct.
Yep.
That's going to be, you know, wide open at all times.
So you would ask them to pull in there and wait until the place, till the, your business opens?
Or they can, oftentimes they'll unload, um, leave the car, put the keys in a drop slot and leave.
Okay. So that, that is the plan that you would have? You would, they would have instructions on to unload the car, drop the keys in the drop box and continue on their merry way?
Right. That's what they do, uh, now.
Okay.
So it's essentially, you know, we're going to, uh, you know, the, the development of the property isn't going to change our, our business model or our business plan. You know, hopefully we'll sell a few more cars within the building, but that, um, isn't, there's no guarantee there. But ex- exact, um, the, the plan is to, you know, carry on our business just as we have been for the past 20, 27 years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Jason?
You know, you guys have been very thorough, and I think you, I think you've covered everything that I was thinking. It looks like you've got snow storage in the front there, so right in front of your display area. So during a snowstorm, you're going to have to move all those cars to push the snow towards the front, which is... Which I guess that'll be, that'll be interesting.
We have, we have snow storage in different areas too, and they, they always clean off the cars and move the cars anyway so that they can plow a lot.
Yes, snowstorms, unfortunately in our business, not our friend, and it's, it's a lot of work, but it's, it's what we've always had to contend with. So we're, we're used to it.
You guys covered everything. Thank you. Thank you, David.
Is there any, I know we talked last time, I guess the one last question I had is if we look down to, I guess, the left of the screen, Dennis Soraki, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly. I know that's another, somebody else's site or land, but that area, and again, I know that's not yours, that, that area tends sometimes to flood. I know we had talked about your area here to the left. Was anything, yeah, I guess if you could just quickly explain that whole area there, is that higher, I'm assuming than the area over where Dennis Soraki's areas? I'm just, I'm just curious in terms, I know that area floods and I know that's something to do with the state of the town. I'm not sure, but I just was curious as to what the height elevation is of, I guess, the grass or that basin there. I, I just was interested.
So I think, I think you have some puddling issues out on Washington Street in this vicinity. There are some catch basins, but I did notice that it looks like there's some puddling issues along the side of the road here, but the wetland area here is offsite to the northwest. It is four to five feet lower than our site. And I think we talked about the zone A, there's a zone A flood plain, which is a flood plain with no established flood elevation that runs kind of very inconsistent with the topography out there. But we did provide some calculations at the request of your consultant and the commission, the Conservation Commission, demonstrate that the work that we're doing in that zone A flood plain is not gonna result in any net increase in ground elevation, which there, there won't be. So any flooding that occurs is, you know, going to be confined down to this wetland area here, which is, no, a, a good distance offsite.
Okay. I didn't know if there were any other board members that had any more questions before I open this up and see if there's anybody that has any questions. Karen, I didn't know if there's anything else before I open this up to the public. Okay.
I'm gonna hold right now.
Okay. And then Scott, you're okay?
Yeah, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Great. Uh, well, I'm taking a look here to see if there's anybody. Oh, you've got some, okay, okay. Uh, Karen, did you want, I'm sorry, I didn't even ask you.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry. I just had one outstanding item that Dan and I have been discussing in terms of actually the logistics. So when something is demolished, it's often tricky. So I think they've indicated that they wanna stay operational as long as possible. Dan has offered a condition in terms of the operations, sort of replacing one another and the mechanics of that. I did have a brief discussion with both Scott Moles and Mark Taffeline, the building commissioner, about that. It, it is gonna be tricky, Dan, to, to do all this.
We know.
But I think that, you know, I would recommend that there is a phasing plan and that, you know, the building commissioner and the, and the board of health agents are on top of those two issues. Dan has, has offered some language. I think I would just run that by town council, but otherwise I think everything else was cleared up. You just might wanna clarify one more time the proposed hours of operation?
I don't have our current license in front of us, that I think was revised in nineteen ninety-five. But it would be consistent with that reaction.
At the last meeting, Richard indicated it was Monday to Saturday, nine AM to eight PM.
Right. And, and Fridays and Saturdays, we close, it's six and five respectively.
Then it's through Thursday to eight PM?
Pardon me?
So then it's Monday through Thursday to eight PM?
Correct.
Friday nine to six and Saturday nine to five?
Correct.
Okay. I mean, I would think I would also like to even throw into that, that any kind of dumpster pickup is being done within your operational hours, not outside of those?
I have no problem with that and, and I can just, the only relevant point I can speak from is that our main place, they, they never come before after hours. It's, it is always during business hours that they come. So I would think that would be consistent. And we can tell them that they can't come. That's not a problem.
I would, I agree, and I would like to, like, have that written in. Of late, there seems to be pickups going on in Holliston at three thirty in the morning, which seems to be making people a little upset.
Okay.
I'd rather write it in and not have to go back and talk about it later. Thanks.
No problem. Thank you.
Trying to think if there's anything else that we haven't discussed.
No, I think that, that they've been very responsive. Dave Feist is on the call. He just may wanna clarify that, you know, he's comfortable with the stormwater design and just, I, I, you know, you just may wanna ask whether Dave thinks that this site warrants additional inspections or whether it's sufficient to get enough built in the end?
Yep. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. That's David Feist with CMG Engineering again. Yeah, overall, I think they did a really good job, you know, addressing the comments and the site design meets all of the mass stormwater management standards. Overall, you know, I, I guess I'll leave it up to the board whether you think you'd need any interim inspections. I know that they also have a notice of intent, which will have an order of conditions, which I'm sure the conservation agent most likely will be inspecting erosion control as well. So, but I'd be, overall, I know I'm comfortable with the plan and I think they've addressed everything very well.
Thank you. I don't know if anybody had any thoughts in regards to additional inspections, Karen?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I was just kind of going back and thinking about what Karen just said about how the demolition is, it's all, it's all kind of a tricky situation. And I just wanted to make sure that if you're utilizing any of the services that are in the industrial park, that you do use Whitney Street to do so. And then that way, trucks are, you know, going across the street and back and not any other places. You know, if during your demolition, you're using any of the services that are available locally, that you're staying on main roads and going as direct as possible into the, those places.
Understood.
Scott, I don't know if you had anything?
Um, no.
Okay. Uh, Jason?
Yeah, well, for David, Dave Feist, what would you recommend for inspection timing? Karen Sherman mentioned that there may be, it, it may be prudent to have more frequent inspections. I guess, I guess I'm asking both of you, what, what were your thoughts as far as that schedule for inspections?
I know what we've done in other towns, just say on a, on a minimal basis. Usually we would do a pre-construction just meeting right before they start, just to review the project and erosion controls. Second, we would usually inspect the drainage, once that gets all formed up, you know, prior to them, you know, finalizing low even seating, and then maybe again a final site inspection, you know, to look at the overall review, the as-built plans once it's complete. If needed, if there are, I know that they are, you know, Dan did put together, I think, a construction stormwater plan for the project, which will have its own. They'll be responsible for inspections, you know, throughout the project as well for the, under that part of the permit, so those are my recommendations.
I noticed that, oh, I'm sorry.
No, just, just wanna give Karen Sherman the opportunity. That, that sounds pretty reasonable to you, Karen?
Yeah, so, I, I guess based on what you're saying, Jason, is your preference to put in a condition that you think that the circumstances of this construction would warrant the applicant funding third-party inspection?
Yeah, it just sounds, it sounds, you know, because we've got, we've got that water source nearby. I believe there is a sensitive aquifer there. During demolition, there may be, you know, times when, you, you never know. You could, you could get, you could do a few days of demolition and a few days of rain and cause quite a mess. So that, that's all I'm thinking.
I don't know if the, if the applicant or Dan, if you have any input about that, but I would relay that to Ryan if he wanted to build it into the con-con decision as well. Assuming we would not duplicate efforts, then we would share an inspector and try to minimize your costs.
That sounds like, that sounds like a great idea, Karen.
Yeah, and I know Ryan's drafting a decision for the conservation permit right now, so we can certainly wrap that in and, you know, obviously Scott Moles will be doing inspections for the septic system construction. Ryan will be doing inspections for the conservation work. So I think that Dave's recommendation of a pre-construction meeting and then him inspecting the drainage, which is basically the stormwater basin installations, and then a final review makes perfect sense.
I noticed that select board member Tina Hine is on it. Tina, I didn't know if you had any questions or anything you wanted to?
Oh, hi, Dave. Thank, thank you for recognizing me. I don't, I'm just doing my planning board liaison role. I'm, I'm actually waiting.
No, no, no problem. I just didn't know if you had any questions or anything.
No, I'm, I'm waiting for my pizza delivery. I'm actually gonna get off. Nice to hear the good work you do and, um, thank you for calling on me.
Thanks. I, I'm trying to think if there's anybody else that had any questions. So now there's still some, some pending, still things pending with with, it sounds like with the conservation.
I believe they've closed their hearing and he's just drafting.
Okay.
Yeah, they, Ryan didn't have a chance to draft the order. So they did, they had no comments or concerns. They closed the hearing. They're just waiting for Ryan to draft the order. They'll take it up at their next meeting.
But they didn't vote?
No, they just voted to close the hearing.
They just voted to close. So Karen, it sounded like you had thought that there should be, or it would be, we should entertain understanding like a phase of how things are going to work?
Yes.
And
Sir Mark and, you know, Scott, as they're managing things on the site, they, they wanna be realistic about operations, you know, where cars would go and how customers can function in the site while it's under construction.
Right, and also making sure that that overflow doesn't end up on Washington Street, right? So, so is this something then that we should ask to see before we move ahead or?
My guess is that, you, you know, you would just put it, my guess is that you will, you know, Dan could do it, but that it probably, the way that Richard probably is gonna bid this out, it probably would be better for that contractor and Dan to work together to provide a plan. So I think if you write a condition that requires it, and it, I don't know if you wanna review it, but I, I definitely think you should have the, you know, the building inspector review it for his comfort level.
So to my board members, I'm going to tell you what I'm thinking and I'm, I'm conservative when it comes to voting on something before I see everything written out. And I, I would like to see a permit written out with the conditions before I move to vote on something. I think it's prudent to be able to edit something if we don't like the way it reads. But if we pre-vote on things, then I feel like we waive that opportunity. So I, I think you're doing a really nice job. I like seeing what you have. However, I just would like to be able to read through things before I take a vote without seeing what's in front of me.
Yeah, I think if you don't have any other issues for this evening, I, I have a direction to, you know, draft some special conditions in and, and especially that phasing language to run by both the building inspector and, and council. And I'd be happy to, you know, swap drafts with Ryan to, to be consistent and then provide you a draft for your next meeting to vote on. But I think you can, you know, you can comfortably close the hearing if you think that you've had enough interaction with Dan and Mr. Gill. Otherwise, you, you know, if you wanna interact further with them, I think you probably should leave it open. But if, you know, if you're okay with the level of detail that they have provided, then I think you can, you can close. And then just direct me to put it in writing for you.
If you're, if you're not prepared to vote tonight, I think it probably just makes sense to leave it open until your next meeting. I can get you an updated plan, show you the dumpster location and then that way if there are any questions about the conditions as you go through, on at your next meeting, we can, you know, the, the hearing will still be open. We can talk about it.
Thank you. I think that's, that's really agreeable with you. I think that's a really good idea.
And I would just like to circle back to one thing that we talked about at the last meeting, which is Countryside Auto, current, their current permitting limits their vehicle storage to forty cars. And we talked about the fact that, you know, the redesigned site has the capacity easily for fifty cars and that Richard would seek modification of his class-two license to allow fifty cars, but you know, this approval would have to acknowledge that. I did add a note to the plans based on our discussion at the last meeting that you know, up to fifty cars could be allowed if the class-two license was modified. And I guess we would just wanna have some language in the decision acknowledging that.
I did have a brief discussion, Dan, with Travis, pardon me, with Travis about how, you know, how to do that. And I believe that Mr. Gill had reached out to Travis prior to this and I, you know, I think that we agreed that the site planning exercise should come before your request to the select board. So I think he's anticipating the modification request. It is very atypical for the select board to attach so many conditions to an operation. So my guess is that if they reissue, they would be reliant on the new site plan and the new zoning action. I, I think the order of things is, is good.
Okay, great. So, you know, with that, I mean, if, if you guys don't have any further questions from us, we would ask for a continuance. I'll get you an updated plan, show you the dumpster location and then we can come back to, at your next meeting and talk about the draft decision.
Question is, next meeting would be next time? I guess if we, somebody could, we could continue this, but I'm just trying to think when would we continue this to?
You might try to sneak it in before five-five-five.
Okay.
Either start a little bit before seven or do it right at seven?
Okay.
What did we do with five-five-five? Did we do that at seven or did we do that at seven fifteen?
I'm not sure.
What date are you talking about?
February fourth.
Let's see, I don't think I have that. Let's see.
I don't have it written down either.
Let me look that through. Wrote it down. I thought I did, but.
And then what would we have after that? That, we'd be the twenty-fifth, right?
Yeah, that's the long time.
Yeah. So.
If it's possible, we would prefer the fourth. All the other permits will have been issued by then, I believe. If it's possible, we would prefer the fourth, all the other permits will have been issued by then, I believe.
Yeah, there, there's literally nothing else on that agenda but five-five-five, so.
I think we can get them in the fourth, right, I mean, this is, seems like they're in a pretty good spot with this.
Yeah, I was just thinking like whenever time we have five-five-five, why don't we just write them in five or ten minutes before and do this first?
Yeah, Price is Right, we'll do them like one minute after.
Okay.
Right, you can start it late, you just can't start it early.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, I don't.
So, do we wanna agree on like, wanna say seven oh five? I'm, I'm sure we didn't put five-five-five at seven o'clock.
We can do them seven oh six.
Sold.
Seven oh six?
I think for fun, seven oh six.
Okay, alright, seven oh six. So, if somebody would like to make a motion to continue the public hearing?
Motion to continue forty-five Washington Street Countryside Motors Gilroy Che Trust to seven oh-six PM on February fourth.
Alright.
And we'll be the only ones that laugh at that.
Do I have a second?
Jason's second.
Jason is second, yeah, okay, well, go through, I guess Karen?
Aye.
Alright, uh, Jason?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Alright, and David, aye, okay.
Thank you for your time, we appreciate it.
You're welcome, see, see you at seven oh six.
I'll be there at seven oh six. Have a good night.
You too, bye.
Thank you all very much and have a good week, stay safe. And, uh, we're just, I'm just, let's see if there's any, uh, anything else in regards to, I think we're.
I think we're good.
Okay.
Alright, so, motion to adjourn?
Alright, Karen's made a motion, do I have a second?
Scott's second.
Okay, Scott's seconded, I guess we'll start with, uh, Jason?
Aye.
Alright, uh, Karen?
Aye.
Uh, Scott?
Aye.
Okay, great, thank you all, thank you everybody.